City Council Meeting today, Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. There will please stand for the Fudge Leavens.
The Fudge Leavens to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome Sylvia, roll call.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
Council President Rosner.
Here.
Council Brous.
Here.
Council Young.
Here.
Council Garland.
Here.
Council Scott.
Here.
And Council Griffin is absent.
Thank you Sylvia. We have approval of agenda?
I make motion approve the agenda.
Second?
All in favor of approving this, the agenda as printed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you council. We have a consent agenda with five items on it this evening. Item A is approval of October 15th, 2019, city council meeting minutes. Item B, Resolution 2019-078, appointing Mike Smith to the Sherwood Police Advisory Board. Item C is Resolution 2019-079, appointing Vance Steimler to the Sherwood Police Advisory Board. Item D is Resolution 2019-080, appointing Melanie Dobson to the Sherwood Library Advisory Board. And last is item E, Resolution 2019-081, appointing Stephen Remzin to the Sherwood Library Advisory Board.
I move consent. Okay.
Discussion on the motion, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you council. Citizen comments? Time to address council on a topic that's not a public hearing this evening, because you can talk later about that, but no sheets? It's not too late, if you'd like to address council, you can still, there we go. And it's not on the public hearing items? Because you'll be able to talk then. It's quite all right, so we have two public hearings coming up, one on the planned unit development known as Denali Meadows and a planned and a first reading of another ordinance on the Sherwood Municipal Code regarding animal regulations. Either of those topics? Awesome, come on in. I apologize, I didn't want to assume. Thanks for coming down. Please just take a seat, the light is green, so it will pick up your voice and introduce yourself and welcome.
My name is Mary Novelli. I'm here on behalf of the three boys that were hit on Saturday in the pedestrian crosswalk. My son was the one that was, went into the windshield. The other gentleman who's, so my son should have suffered from a broken spine, but the angels saved him. The other gentleman who should have suffered from broken legs is in the audience and the other gentleman who should have suffered from left side injuries is unable to attend. I want to put a face to these individuals to represent why we need more accurate symmetry in the signage with the traffic in the roundabouts as well as traffic symmetry in all the intersections in Sherwood. I think the inconsistency of the traffic signage in the roundabouts as well as the traffic signals causes confusion to the drivers. It's harmful to our pedestrians. These three boys were not wearing hoodies over their heads. Two of them had their hoodies, but their hoods were down. My son's hoodie was around his waist. They were not on their cellphones. They were not hoodlums. In fact, one of the gentlemen's is the top of his class, he's been voted most likely to be president of the United States by his class of 2022, he's the one that's here. My son is the soccer goalie for SHS rec team, he's one of the best goalies in Sherwood. The other gentleman is our defensive end of the Sherwood Sophomore High School team. Regardless of what status they hold in Sherwood, they represent our teenagers, they're responsible. They actually saw this guy on the other side roaring down. They said he had plenty of time to slow down, he had plenty of time to observe the laws of a roundabout where you're only 10 miles per hour when you enter into a roundabout. There is no signage around that roundabout telling you that you are to be entering the roundabout at 10 miles per hour. There are yield signs, there's multiple yield signs all around it, I went and took pictures myself, but there's no sign saying that it's 10 miles around the roundabout. There is 10 miles signage around the school speed zone, there's the inconsistency. But I wanted to bring a face because a lot of people were assuming that it was children's fault. Nowhere in this incident was it the child's fault, it was the irresponsible lack of the driver and his ineptitude of irresponsibility of following the legal limits of driving, not allowed to say because it's alleged, irresponsibility on his part, excessive speeding and other citations that are going to be going onto his record. But for all the shamers out there, I want them to understand, these pedestrians need to be protected and the traffic inconsistencies need to be addressed in Sherwood. We have three major intersections that all have very confusing, misleading traffic signals. We lived in Missouri five years ago before I moved here and when they made changes to the traffic signals, it all happened consistently. I know Sunset is going to be under major construction and I applaud that, but it would be nice that all three intersections were consistently combined in that reconsideration of construction of consistency as well. And this is a perfect example why it needs to be done.
Thank you for coming today and thank you for, like you said, putting a face to the youth and we're very happy that they are not more, that their injuries were as limited as they are. On behalf of the council and the community, we are absolutely committed to working on those things you talked about as well as other traffic calming, traffic safety areas in the town. That's why we are working on a citizen committee to review issues, so we have a nice public process to do that. But we also, the chief and the city manager have the ability to do things when it's obvious and a safety issue to be active, because A, that committee hasn't been formed yet, probably won't until first of next year. But the topic of the roundabout, I know, was the subject of quite the meeting Monday morning, to review it and brainstorm ideas for that roundabout and our other roundabouts to make sure that we are being consistent, being safe for the pedestrians, making sure the drivers are educated and on and on. So, thank you very much.
So Joe, can you just tell me, you and chief went out and visited there today or yesterday and what, one of the first things that we're going to do, while some of the other things might take a little bit longer, but what's one of the first things that we can do?
Yeah, Chief Growth and Craig Sheldon, our Public Works Director and I went out to that roundabout where this accident happened over the weekend to look at immediate kind of things. So there are some hedges that we clearly identified that block lines of sight, so if you're coming around that roundabout, it's hard to see pedestrians, especially smaller children, and there are many, I live in that neighborhood, so I know there's lots of children that cross that street there, including mine. Those hedges are going to come out. Those are immediate things that we can do, we'll probably replace them with low shrubs or low vegetation, so it still looks good, but there's some sightlines that we can fix. The other meeting that Mayor Mays mentioned on Monday morning and my senior leadership team, I've basically asked Julia to kind of reassess that roundabout. What can we do for pedestrian safety? It could be additional lights, it could be moving crosswalks, it could be all kinds of things. We're going to take a really important look. You've mentioned some signage that we need to look at as well, about speed limits through that intersection. People drive too fast. I mean, I think anybody, and if you saw the social media discussion online about it, people want to see safer roundabouts in this community for pedestrians. And part of it is drivers slowing down and paying attention, but it's, there are things we can do, not only at that roundabout, but at some of the other roundabouts in town that we really need to relook at, the design of them, sightlines and safety from a pedestrian standpoint. And I've had numerous conversations with counselors that feel that way as well. So we're already moving ahead with that. Some of those things can happen right away, some of those may take a few months, some of them may have budget impacts because we didn't plan to retrofit roundabouts, but we may have to do that. There's not 15 or 20 in town, there's essentially five or six in town. But it's all about pedestrian safety at this point. They work for the most part for cars. I mean, people are driving too fast, but it's the safety from crossing those roundabouts that I think we're not where we need to be as a community. So I don't know if that answers your question.
That did answer my question and letting the community know that we heard and we're, something we're looking into.
Yeah, and before this accident happened, it's been on our radar. It was the whole notion of relooking at parts of our community that are at higher risk is a council goal for this year, so thank you for coming down today.
One of my classmates actually designed and built and structured roundabouts as a living and I almost called him and said, can you please fly up here and redesign all our roundabouts? When he retired recently and his retirement cake is one big roundabout.
Very cool, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council? All right, we will move to presentations. Chief?
That's right. Thank you Mayor. I'm going to have Chris Azla come forward and we are going to swear him in. He has newly been promoted, recently been promoted and is our newest police sergeant. And before we do that, I'm going to put him on the spot and just have him give you a very brief rundown of his career here with Sherwood, so go ahead.
So, I felt very fortunate to be appointed to the Sherwood Police Department back in 2011. And I set some pretty lofty goals for myself and I think in my interview for the police department, I actually told them that I wanted to be an SRO and that that was one of my, you know, five-year goals. And I was fortunate enough to be able to achieve that at two and a half years in and had a great experience working with families and youth and within the school district here. Taught me a lot about investigations and about how to interact with the community and it was a very, very positive experience for me, but then led me to an interest in doing detective work. And so, I've been doing the detective job for the last three years and throughout that position and my position within our Sherwood Police Officers Association, I got a lot of different opportunities to work with the chief and the captains and the other sergeants and realized that I wanted to take a little bit higher leadership role within the department and set my next goal for becoming sergeant. So after this last process over the summer, I felt very fortunate to be told that I was going to be starting this position here in November and so I'm just thankful to be here and thankful that I was able to reach that, get that next goal, so. Oh, I got, I got to look back at those captains back. We'll settle in to sergeant first.
Chris, congratulations.
Thanks Chris. So Chris fills the fourth sergeant position we had that was identified as a priority, excuse me, and was part of our budget presentation as you recall and was part of the approved budget, excuse me. So he mentioned this summer, so the process, the competitive process for this position actually took place at the end of August and, but we've been, timing wise, we've been waiting to get further recruitment and then also leverage some time to strengthen the budget from a fiscal perspective and so we're at that point. So Chris started November 1st. So with that, unless there's any other questions, we will do our swearing in and be done. All right, raise your right hand, good afternoon. I, Christopher Azla, do solemn and swift. I will support and abide by the Constitution.
That I will support and abide by the Constitution.
And laws of the United States and of the state of Oregon.
And laws of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I will uphold and enforce.
That I will uphold and enforce.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
The ordinances of the city of Sherwood.
The ordinances of the city of Sherwood.
And the rules and regulations of the Sherwood Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Sherwood Police Department.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of police sergeant.
Of the office of police sergeant.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
The best of my abilities, so help me God.
All right, congratulations.
Awesome.
Awesome, congratulations.
Great, great job.
Mayor?
You bet. All right. Now we have two public hearings this evening and we'll start with the first one, ordinance 2019-012. Sylvia?
The Sherwood City Council will hold public hearings this evening to hear testimony on ordinance 2019-012, approving a planned unit development PUD to be known as the Denali Meadows Planned Unit Development and ordinance 2019-013, amending chapter 6.04 of the Sherwood Municipal Code Regarding Animal Regulations. The public hearings this evening will be conducted as follows, we will hear the staff report, questions if any by the city council for staff, we will receive written testimony, we will then open the public hearing for testimony and the time will be limited to four minutes per person. Any interested person may present testimony. We will then close the public hearing, no other comments will be heard from the public. Final comments by staff, questions of staff if any by the council, followed by discussion by the council. This is the first hearing this evening on these two ordinances. Generally, the council will hold two hearings prior to making a decision. A second hearing on these items is currently scheduled for November 19th. However, in accordance with the Sherwood City Charter, council reserves to write to make a decision at the close of this hearing by a unanimous vote of all sitting council members. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize people wishing to speak and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded.
Thank you Sylvia. Joy, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mays and councilors, I'm Joy Chang, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. Before you tonight is Denali Meadows Plan Unit Development, case file number PUD 19-02. The project was formerly known as Murdock Road PUD. The Planning Commission held one public hearing on this proposal and has forwarded a recommendation to the city council of approval with conditions. The proposal in front of you develops plans to develop or the applicant's plans to develop 5.27 acres of land into 13 units or lots through a planned unit development subdivision that requires also open space. The proposed development is for detached residential housing and adjustments to front, rear and street setbacks are also requested. The site, as you can see, is just east of Murdock and also the zoning for the site is very low density residential. With the proposed planning development designation, the site can be developed with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet as long as additional criteria are met and if you do approve this proposal, we would add a PUD overlay to the zoning, so then the zoning would be very low density residential dash planned unit development. Some site history, the site is within Southeast Sherwood Master Plan. It has also been identified as part of the DEQ cleanup, environmental cleanup site. The criteria, the applicable criteria are identified on this slide and all applicable review criteria have either been satisfied or can be satisfied as conditioned within the staff report. Just as a reminder, a planned unit development is a two-step process. The first is the preliminary development plan approval where the planning commission make the recommendation to city council and again, the city council renders the decision. And then once the preliminary development plan is approved, then the second step happens where the applicant will submit detailed final development plan for review and approval to the planning commission. The PUD integrates building, land use, transportation facilities, utility systems and open space through an overall site design on the single parcel or land or multiple properties under one or more ownership and the purpose is to allow for creativity and flexibility in design and review which cannot be achieved through the strict adherence to existing zoning and subdivision standards. This image of the slide is the recommended alternative BC for the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan. As I mentioned before, the Southeast Master Plan was added to the code and the first standard is maximum density of four dwelling units per net buildable acre and the net buildable area for the site is 3.32 acres after subtracting right away in open space tracks. And based on this buildable area, the site can be developed, oops, as proposed. Again, the minimum lot area for the site is 10,000 square feet and the proposed is between 10,000, just a little bit over to 13,630. Again, with the planned unit development standards, there's pedestrian connections with the applicant is proposing, open space tracks, environmental constraints again with DEQ cleanup. There's also view corridor that was required, but in this particular situation, the view corridor isn't necessary because it isn't within this particular area. There are housing design compatibility where the applicant was required to submit an architectural pattern book and the pattern book basically that was submitted identified these six different proposed building elevations that are, that will complement the surrounding community, specifically the new Denali PUD to the southeast of the site. Again, site flexibility is part of the planned unit development standards and the applicant is proposing adjustments to all the lots' front yard setback from 20 feet to 15, lots one and four rear yard of five feet difference, lots four, five and six, again, street corner side yard, five feet difference from the typical standard. Required notices and publications were completed and there were no community letters or emails that were received and during the planning commission hearing, one public testimony was received in favor of the proposal. After the planning commission, an abutting neighbor, Mr. Miller, did request a change in condition that allows the site direct access to Ironwood Lane through the open space track. Mr. Miller is here tonight and I believe he is planning to testify and present his requests. The planning commission summary, we have the planning commission on September 24th and it was approved and basically the key items that were identified were off-street parking, making sure that there was adequate or off-street parking, so we are going to require the applicant to provide a parking plan showing two off-street parking spaces per lot. And then the other one was a clarification in regards to where they would have to roll their solid waste and recycling receptacles. Instead of a private street, they would have to roll them out to the nearest public street. So after deliberation, they unanimously voted approval with the modified conditions that I just discussed. All other approval criteria not highlighted in this oral staff report are addressed within the written staff report. The criteria have either, have either been met or can be satisfied as conditioned. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council grant approval with conditions of Denali Meadows PUD, case file number PUD 19-02. That concludes my staff report and I can answer any questions you may have at this time.
So, thank you Joy. Before we get testimony, I have one general question. Can you repeat, you know, PUD, there's a big public benefit that's usually inherent. Remind everyone, what is the public benefit for this design?
Well, the public benefit in regards to the design is the flexibility. Many of the lands that are requested for planned unit development has some certain restrictions. In this particular case, there is the DEQ contaminated site and so with this process, they are going to be able to clean it and that the entire site can be fully developed to the 13 lots that they're proposing.
Cleaning up contaminated land is definitely a community benefit. Thank you. We'll have other questions later.
Can you cycle back to the map real quick? I want to look at that tract E that was requested by the neighbor. The access through tract E, is that what the request was? Oh, okay.
Yes.
And which is that, can you point out the property on this map or?
Oh yeah, so actually I have another map for you.
Okay. I know we'll get to his testimony, but I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, so I wanted to bring this up, so let's just bring it, there we go. So Mr. Miller owns the parcel right here where it says Miller, oops, you don't, I don't have my pointer on. Sorry about that. So Mr. Miller owns this parcel that is in blue and he is at this time not proposing any type of development because he's not in, but he would like ultimately to access tract E so that he can develop his parcels to the south. And I can definitely, I would suggest that I would address as far as staff comments tied to the requests after we hear all of the applicant and also the neighbor.
Thank you.
And Joy, the tract A, D and C are all to be maintained by a homeowner association?
Tract D is the water quality tract, that's in the north, so that typically is maintained by the city, but the remaining open space tract are typically maintained and owned by the homeowners association.
Typically is, typically is, is one word, but is part of it, they are required to maintain it?
Yes, that is correct. So in this particular proposal would be tract A, tract C and tract E.
As well as tract B?
Yes, but tract B is a roadway.
Right.
Yes.
And they'll be required to maintain their own roadway?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that's the only questions I have at this point. If council agrees, we'll take public testimony? Great. So first, we'll hear anyone that's here to do testimony and support of the application.
The applicant.
Oh applicant, I apologize, yes, absolutely. It's been a, it's been a couple years since I've done a PUD application.
Not a problem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilors, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Steve Miller and I just happen to be a Miller as well, I'm not the Miller of the property there. I work for Emilio Design LLC, 6445 Southwest Fall Brook Lane, Suite 1, Beaverton, 97008. First off, you know, really want to thank staff for all the hard work in getting us here tonight as well as the planning commission for holding their hearings and taking testimony as well on this application and obviously we concur with everything that's happened to this point and the recommendation from the planning commission. But we have a bit of a unique request tonight because we are trying to respond to some of the comments that staff provided in regards to the Miller property and try to help facilitate the development of this area of the city. And to do that, we're going to need to request a continuance. There's a couple of conditions of approval that we need to address and bring some information forward to you folks so we can demonstrate that we still meet all the applicable criteria and I'll get to those conditions real quickly here. They happen to be. They happen to be conditions of approval A8 and B1. We would like to bring forward some, an alternative condition for each one of those that addresses tract E. As you can see, tract E really is a remnant piece of land for this property. And so, there, there was a lot line adjustment, and there was a condition in that lot line adjustment that required easements be provided through tract E to the benefit of the Miller property. And that's a concern to us because at this time, we're proposing to improve that tract, and we don't want to put in improvements that could come out later. And so, we're trying to demonstrate to city staff that that tract E really isn't necessary to meet the requirements for this project. We don't need it for density, we don't need it for our open space to meet that requirement. And so, we would like to try and tweak those two conditions a little bit so tract E isn't so dependent upon for this project. And so, we need to bring that information forward to you to show you that we can make this project happen without tract E. And then, that would allow for the easements and some other things to occur over that tract to allow the Miller property to develop without any encumbrances on that land. And so, I don't have a lot to bring forward in terms of talking about the project right now. What we want to do is continue this to your next hearing, bring that information in in the meantime to you so you have a chance to look at it, and then talk with you about that at the next hearing to, to see if we can all reach an agreement on how these conditions should be worded to help the, the lot line adjustment meet the conditions that it has and allow the development of the Miller property to happen in a, in a reasonable way.
Josh, how are we with 120-day rule? Or there is no, because of PUD, we don't have 120-day rule?
Deadline is December 5th, so we still have time for two more hearings.
So, I'm still going to ask to extend, have, to, to advocate on your behalf for a continuance, to extend the 120-day rule to the first?
That would be smart, just in case we have a cancellation or something to.
To the, to January 7th, there'd be a, there's a council meeting in the first January.
Is that like a 30-day? Is that what you're looking at?
We're working at.
Yeah, an additional 30 days onto the, onto the 120-day rule.
30 days.
That's fine.
So, do we want him, does he need to say something into the microphone saying, request a 30-day continuance to 120-day?
Have a form of the hill sign.
Excellent.
Yeah, and I can, I can provide that when we provide the, a written information that we're going to put in for those conditions. We'll put that in there as well.
Okay. Great. We're still, we'll still, if other folks want to give testimony, we'll do that today.
And if there is some opposition or anything, we would like that opportunity to come up now to respond to that, but essentially, we would like to have another meeting too with you folks to address those conditions. So, I'll stop now and let the other folks speak, and then, if we need to, I can come up at the end and chat with you a little bit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, anyone like to testify in support of the application? Okay. Are you Brad Miller? Great, come on. Yes, I apologize, yes, you did say support with condition. Yeah, I apologize. Welcome, Brad.
Yeah, so Brad Miller, 23008 Southwest Murdoch, that's our property there. Family property, we have family living on the property and has for about the last decade. We support the project, we support Tim Roth and his family as developers and builders who do an excellent job. They're going to be an asset to the community. This, this condition came at this late hour just because I, I misunderstood kind of an ambiguous point in part of the property line adjustment. It basically read that I had access through tract E for sewer, for transportation, but only if I were to build a public street. So, in this layout, you can see there's a couple lots that I might like to have private access frontage, so the Roth family's working with us to try to make that happen so that we have access through tract E to let that develop to a way that, that, that works for, for both sites. One of the challenges with our site, as you can see, is, is our current shared access for both sites is out on to Murdoch Road there. And so, one of the things that, that may be required at, at some point is that we extend that to our site. Well, if you were to pan out a little bit, you'd see we don't actually align with Upper Roy, so I'm not even sure it's possible for us to get a true public access to our site to develop on our own without the property to the north where it says Mosher. There's other restricting issues. One of them is if you look, the little squiggly lines are the grade lines, so there's extreme grade as it goes up that hill. So, that's going to be a challenge, it's, it's going to be dealt with way down the road when, when both property owners can come together. But at this point, we've just been asking to protect our right to develop the southern portion of our property, which, which tract E gives us that access. Those are typically called idiot strips or spite strips depending on which, which side you're on. I'm not sure, I think we're on the idiot side right now. But, but we are looking to get access the Roths are working with on it, so we're fully in favor of their proposal, and they've been, been working with us in a kind manner. I wish that, that you guys could go full through with the condition that we do have private access and give them approval. These sites are extremely challenging because of the DEQ condition. If you've ever worked with them in the past, I mean, it can take months to get an oil tank removed and talk about sites that are out of your control to deal with that. So, these guys have been working through it, it's a huge challenge, it's a massive benefit to the community to have those sites cleaned up and to have a developer, developer working through it. We're also working with that master plan that is, is a challenge also. If you, if you look at like where our house is, is where our family lives, like it shows a park right there. So, that master plan didn't really address the existing home sites and things like that, so they've done the best they could to work through that issue, and we will, at the same time, trying to create connectivity and make those things work. So, with the restrictions that there are, we're all pretty much working together, but we, we certainly approve it with the condition that we get access via private or public through that tract E in one way or the other, and I think we're working toward that.
Great. Thank you very much, Brad. Anyone else like to give testimony? So, if council agrees, I'm certainly in favor of granting the applicant's request of extending the 120-day clock by 30 days, continuing this first reading to our next city council meeting. And I'm, do I need to make a motion of that effect?
I don't believe we need a motion because it's already scheduled.
I don't know, but we're extending the first reading to the next meeting, and then we'll have a second reading after that.
This is still, this is still the first reading?
I know.
So, we're, we're holding us, we're extending the first reading or we're holding, having the, continuing the hearing? This is our first reading, we're continuing the hearing. It'll be the second reading, continue.
So, that's not what the roots requested? No, I'm, I'm, I'm just going to verbatim, because if.
He asked for a continuance, he didn't ask to continue the first reading.
Right, I think.
I, I'd be in favor of, I mean, I think the applicant is in good faith, trying to do the right thing. I don't want to delay their timeline if we don't have to, so that's my position.
It sounds like, per code, we, we have the ability to continue the hearing, and then, at the next meeting, when, when you close the hearing, then that would be the first reading and you would take a vote at that time. And then, if there's a full council, you could potentially cover both readings in one meeting if you have a full council in attendance. And that's kind of what we're looking for.
Just for clarity, so we have a, we have to have, unless there's a, a vote of unanimous council at the end of, of a single hearing, the typical process is that we have two hearings, two readings, two hearings over two separate nights. If we are continuing the first hearing and the first reading to the next meeting in November, then we're also talking about having a third meeting, which would be the second reading in December. So, if you're, if, those are kind of the two options. We can, we can conclude the first hearing tonight and have the second hearing at our next meeting and put, and have a vote at the end of that, or potentially, we're going into December.
No, I, I hear what you're saying there, and so, if, if this is the first reading, that's beneficial, obviously, to us in a timeline fashion, and then we move to the second reading, and if everything works out, then it sounds like we're done at that point. And so, we, we support that 100%.
All right, so we're still going to continue the 120-day rule by 30 days per the request, and then we will go to a second reading next month, and we might act then, but we could extend it to another meeting, because who, who knows what can happen between now and then if we're changing conditions in the application and it's not staff-initiated. Be fair to the community.
November 17th is the date for the second hearing.
To the 19th, correct?
19th, November 19th.
Thank you. So, we will go, so is it clear as mud?
I think it's.
Just, just for clarification, if additional information is, because again, this meeting is getting continued and staff's going to get additional information at the next hearing, are we, is, is it still open in regards to receiving additional information after that as far as for like the second hearing, the second reading?
That what I just heard the applicant say is that we are, we are, we have conducted the first hearing, and the applicant is, is satisfied with this being the first hearing, correct? And then, we will be having our second hearing on November 19th, and that will, that will be the end of the hearing process unless the council decides to continue it further after that. Which council will have a little flexibility to do based on the 120-day extension.
Right.
Excellent. I, we, I just wanted to make sure that anything that is presented at the next hearing, that if for some odd reason we haven't gone to a yes yet, that there is opportunity to continue the hearing.
Yep, yep. Thank you for the clarification.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. We think it'll be straightforward, but you never know when a wrinkle will occur. So, we are now moving to the first reading of our second ordinance, proposed ordinance this evening. Sylvia?
Mayor, the statement that I read was.
You heard them both? I apologize, I was glossed over a bit.
So, I'm going to ask for, no, I'm just, I was going to say I was going to ask for continuance, but I'm not, I was just, just, I was kidding.
If you're so deemed, animals are.
No, 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 I'm kidding. So, this is actually a fairly straightforward ordinance, I believe. It's really more of a cleanup rather than a significant change. It was developed with input from planning, police to a certain extent, Josh, a lot of heavy lifting by Dan Miller, our co-compliance officer, which is why he's here because he might be able to answer questions if I'm unable to. But really, Title VI of the Sherwin Municipal Code is titled Animals, but if you read it, it really pretty much speaks to dogs. And after we had a number of, or a variety of citizen questions about that chapter, we realized that we probably should just modify that so it was more clear to apply more broadly to all animals. So, that's essentially what the majority of the proposed changes do. And then, as, as part of that cleanup, Dan also recommended, and we agreed, that the code is silent regarding bees, and that is certainly something that is more, more common now, and so, he basically pulled some language from another jurisdiction, I believe, Tigerd, Lake Oswego, regarding bees, just so that there's something more specific that if he gets complaints, he has something to deal with. So, with that, I'll just open it up for questions, and again, I might invite Dan up if you do have questions because he might.
There's nothing regarding cats.
Well, now, it is all animals, so there was nothing regarding cats, but now it's animals.
So, anyone here like to give testimony in support or opposition or neutral on the Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion of the first reading. Counsel, any questions of staff today? We'll have another chance in two weeks, unless there's unanimous interest in this. I'm not interested in you being unanimous.
And we, we don't have a.
No, and Russell's not here, so we don't even have that chance. I was just going to stand up and say we need process, and we have to have another meeting anyways. All right. Any questions of staff this evening? Comments from counsel on the proposal? Hearing done, moving on, we will, see us all on this in two weeks, or whatever the calendar says. Thank you, Julia, thank you, Sylvia. Counsel announcements? Anyone have announcements on counsel? Yes?
Oh, I was going to go, are you skipping Joe tonight?
Did I? Oh, I totally skipped Joe. Yeah, we're skipping Joe tonight. Joe, you got any, any report to?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and counsel, I have just one update, and I'm going to have Chief Growth give an update. So, as your last meeting, you may recall, we had a number of residents in the Cedarbrook neighborhood talk about parking issues in their neighborhood, and Chief Growth and his staff and Julia had been working hard in a variety of manners to address that issue. They had a neighborhood meeting last night, and I wanted to provide an update to counsel and an opportunity for you to ask any questions. So, Chief, can you give a quick, brief update?
Sure. So, after last meeting, really kind of two things wanted to have happen. One was some initial response and attention, for lack of a better word, in that area, which we have done to make sure that we're educating folks about where they can and can't park, to put it simply. And then, the second piece was to expand, the three gentlemen that came out was to give that opportunity to the, that community that they represented. And so, we scheduled a meeting, had that meeting last night at the police department. Julia was there, Bob Galati was there, Captain Carlson was there, and myself. And so, really, we talked about kind of the three main issues that they brought forward, pedestrian safety, speeding and parking, and it was a very positive meeting, gave them, there was 10 folks that showed up, including the three gentlemen that came and spoke with you. And so, just gave those folks that showed up an opportunity to kind of vent some more, brainstorm, talk about the issue. They thanked all of us for the work that we had done. So, I, just to kind of touch on all three of those issues, pedestrian safety, Craig's crew went out and immediately did some pretty significant trimming to increase the visibility of the crosswalk that goes across Cedarbrook at Minekee, which is used quite a bit by younger kids on their way to the Ridge's campus. And so, they were very, very happy that we had taken those actions. And then, we talked about the increased patrols to keep the speeding down, and then, of course, talked about the enforcement of the, the parking regulations. And so, again, they're very happy with all that, but we also talked about the reality that, that that's not sustainable. So, city staff is working, mainly Julia's team is working on looking at some other options, and at this point, we don't have anything concrete, but we're looking at trying to, or exploring the possibility of maybe opening up a few more parking spaces for folks in the area, but it's not going to be a lot. I mean, it just, it is what it is, but maybe a few more, and then, maybe some other types of programs that would protect certain areas of parking, and so, anyway, there's, there's a lot of things still on the table. It was a good, very productive meeting, so I don't know if Julie wants to add anything to that, and certainly, if you have any questions, be glad to answer.
Do you have anything, Julia, at this point?
No, I, I just, I guess, I guess, yes, I do. Just adding on, also looking at the existing apartment complex and making sure that they're fully in compliance with their parking. That had been an issue in the past, and we did some preliminary looking, but we need to look a little bit deeper at that. And then, also, just exploring whether or not there's other opportunities for other parking solutions. I'm not going to get into detail because it, it's a little, I don't know if it's possible, it's a little creative, but, so we're, we're kind of just exploring a lot of other possibilities to increase parking and reduce the demand in that one area.
And I just, final thing I just remembered I want to add is we are going to reach out to the apartments, the apartment manager now, and, and. to the apartments, the apartment manager now, and any residents there, and offer them the same opportunity to meet with us and talk about their frustrations and kind of work with them. And again, it will include Julie and her team to just, again, try to
just be inclusive and make sure everybody has a voice and they're all part of the community and try to solve this together as much as possible. So...
Does that involve encouraging parking in garages, since the garages were designated parking spots?
So that's part of the co-compliance issue. And Dan did go out and do a pretty, I think, a cursory look shortly after that meeting, and he didn't see anything glaringly obvious. But several years ago, before the Cedar Brook subdivision was even built, there were some significant parking issues. And at the time, we did go to the apartment complex and remind them strongly that they had a certain parking requirement that they had to provide, and that they couldn't not allow those parking spaces to be utilized, including those apart... Including the garages. And they actually, at the time, provided evidence of specific language in their leases that prohibited storage within the garages and measures where they would randomly actually inspect the garages to make sure that they weren't storing. My guess is, and this was actually validated by one of the people at the meeting last night, the management has changed multiple times since then. And so it might be just reminding them once again of that requirement, because it is a problem in that area. So reminding them of what they're obligated to do per their site plan approval. And I think that will help a little bit. It certainly won't solve all the problems because my guess is there are more cars than there are parking spaces, regardless of how many parking spaces are available. So...
Great. So I wanted to loop back with council since you had some folks here and provide an update and then an opportunity to ask any questions. So that's all I had for tonight.
Thanks, Chief. Awesome. Questions for Joe? Awesome. Council announcements?
Great. I don't have too much. We didn't have a police advisory board that was canceled, the last one. Couple things coming up at the YMCA to make note of. On November 9th, they're having a parents' night out. And it looks like they have a few camps coming up. Rugby clinic, these are all November 18th and 19th, the rugby clinic, and then 18th through the 20th, a med-science camp, and an active kids' camp. So check into those if you have any interest on their website. Also, a couple dates that they have coming up, November 8th and the 22nd, they're having a help desk for senior open enrollment questions. And I just think that's really vital. I have a mom... My mom is a senior and having some memory problems and stuff. And so I just think that they offer that service for seniors that open enrollment is confusing. And as you get older, it's even more confusing. So I just think that's really great that they ask... Offer that. And then I know most of us attended the Langer's ribbon cutting last week. Was that last week?
25th.
Yeah, last week, two weeks ago. And it looks like they had a great turnout. The entertainment center is... Seems to be booming every night, and people are... Think they've messed with their prices to get it to a comfortable level for the community. And I think they're doing great. So it was a fun time.
Awesome. Chair, council president, looking for the mic?
I'm going to, surprisingly enough, keep it short again. Just a couple things. Next meeting, I got a WRWC, Willamette River Water Coalition meeting coming up next week, school board meeting, so a lot more next week. But did go to the Langer's grand opening. That was an awesome event, great addition to our community. They're doing a great job over there. Also, went to a ribbon cutting at the new Ackerly facility, which is an amazing retirement facility out there over across the street from the police department. And they're doing a great job. If you ever get a chance to go in there, it's like walking into a cruise ship. It's... They're doing a great job. And also went to a ribbon cutting at the Springs, because they just opened their new...
Open house.
Yeah, open house. And they just opened their new wing over there, which also looked great. And they're doing a wonderful job as well. So it's great to see those businesses move into our town and do well. And that's it. That's all I got.
Awesome. Renee?
Well, let's see. Last week, I think it was last week or maybe the week before, we had a library advisory committee meeting. And once again, very impressed with what our library is doing, the work that they put into their newsletter. So lots of information, lots of things going on. And then Adrian, the library manager, continues to impress me with all her various charts and stuff that helps us really truly understand what's going on. And she did an update, or gave an update on the strategic plan, another well-done chart. But almost, well, 84% done with the strategic plan. And her estimate is that by the year's end, she'll be 93% done. So they're doing great things at the library. We conducted some interviews for library advisory members, and so there are two new advisory committee members, and I think there's two more positions open. That night, we also heard from Erica on the master plan. So she had a conversation with the library board and got their feedback on some things. Let's see, senior, the Friends of the Senior Center, there's lots of trips happening. Washington Square Mall's coming up, sleigh bells, and possibly a trip to go bowling. Lots of parties going on. They are partying fools. There's a party at least once a month at the Senior Center, but they're having a great time. And they are planning their annual bazaar, which is November 16th. I think it's nine to three, if I remember correctly. So lots of craft items and stuff for sale and that. Those funds go back to the Friends of the Senior Center. And then they are working on a wine and dinner party for the spring or fall. I can't remember. But while we have our friends from TVF are in the room, I just wanted to shout out, on the first Sunday of the month, I helped with a service that helps homeless folks in Washington County. And I had a young lady that came to us that day that... She had disability anyway, but she also had a foot that was extremely swollen and infected. And I know Rob Watson, a great friend of mine, stopped by the station. And I'm like, guys, can you look at her foot and give me some advice before I take her to the shelter? And the guys that were on duty, and the young lady was on duty as well, came out, looked at her foot, gave me some recommendations, took her to the hospital. But guys, thank you for all you do. I do appreciate you so much. That's all I have.
Great.
I'll try and keep it short as well. Since our last meeting, I attended the Culture Arts Commission meeting. They're also doing some great stuff. They got a lot of very cool programs either in place right now or coming up soon. Really getting some very eclectic, interesting stuff coming up. There's one that's coming up, and I wish I had more specific information right now, but a guy who does like Lego art, I guess. It sounds really interesting.
I know.
Yeah. I'm not sure on the name, but apparently he's known in Portland and everything. So check out sherwoodcenterforthearts.org to register for some classes, check out their calendar. All the information's going to be out there. I also attended the Willamette Intake Facility meeting, and that was actually held in Tigard, Tigard Public Works Building. So that was great. Just kind of a public announcement based on a lot of what we've heard tonight and everything else with the new daylight savings time. It's darker at night. Visibility is lower. Pedestrians, please, please look out for pedestrians when you're driving your cars. Pedestrians, when you're out, wear reflective items. Be visible, be seen. Don't be on your phones. Last thing, early 12th birthday wishes for my oldest daughter Izzy. Her birthday is tomorrow night. So love you, kiddo, and happy birthday. That's it.
I think she'll technically be a pre-teen.
I think she already is. She already is. She is a great kid, and I love her very much. Well, on that note, my son Connor turns seven in a week and a half. So happy early birthday to him as well. My youngest of three. A couple things for me. I attended the Planning Commission work session back on October 17th. There was a couple of discussion items. The most kind of interesting ones probably were kind of the... Kind of an overview of the regulations coming out of Salem, 2001, Bill 2001 to Bill 2003, and how they're going to impact our zoning and development code going forward, the changes we have to make to those codes, as well as our comprehensive plan to accommodate the requirements coming to the city from Salem, and how that will impact our ability to have local decisions in some cases. The next Planning Commission meeting is here, one week from tonight, in this room, on the 12th. Planning Commission, this will be a public meeting. There will be a public hearing. The much-awaited fence code updates. This has been in the works for most of the calendar year, and I know a lot of people are interested. So if you want...
Did it really start?
If you want to be heard, come to Planning Commission meeting in one week.
Did it really start in the spring?
Yeah. It started back in January, March, or whatever. And they had a couple work sessions, and then it kind of got put on the back burner for a while. So it hasn't been worked on, you know, continuously all that time, but...
Who knows? Mike just hit that anniversary mark.
So that'll be coming up next week. So if you want to be heard, show up and be heard.
Hard work.
Not city-related, but school-related. There's the... In conjunction with the schools, opening and changes over every next year, there's the Boundary Adjustment Committee is ongoing. They've been working hard for a few months. They had a meeting, their first open house last night, where they unveiled four preliminary ideas. I was on the last adjustment committee about five years ago. It is a very tough job. So I thank all those people who volunteered to do that. It's a no... It's truly a no-win situation. No matter what plan you come up with, somebody's going to be mad.
Doug, you're a veteran of this process. Did you not volunteer?
I felt like I was, you know, committed enough already, overcommitted maybe. And actually, I missed the deadline, so I probably would have, probably would have otherwise. So they had an open house on Monday. There's four scenarios. It's on the web, the school district's website. You can go right to Sherwood School District. It's on their front page. There's a link to it. You can see all the maps. You can see all the background information. There's a link to email in your feedback. If you want to have feedback heard, you need to go do that. So if you're... This is an important issue to you, and it probably is for most of us, I would definitely go and give that feedback. And I will tell you it will be... It will be seen by the committee, and it will be taken into consideration. Just keep in mind, it is a thankless, no-win job. I can tell you that for sure. Lastly, not this coming Saturday, but the fall, or Sunday, but the following one on the 17th, at Sherwood High School, there is a sporting event. It's the Northwest All-Star Cheer Showcase. So it's five different competitive all-star cheer gyms from the Portland area, kind of having their dress rehearsal kickoff for the season. Last year, we had about 200 athletes and about 1,500 spectators there. Expect a pretty similar, maybe a little bit more turnout this year. It's just $5. It's 10 o'clock on Sunday, the 17th. So it's a pretty cool sport. If you haven't seen competitive cheerleading before, it's not probably what you think it is. It's a combination of tumbling, gymnastics, dance, ton of athleticism. These girls and boys are incredible athletes. So come check that out. It's a lot of fun.
Awesome. Thank you. Quickly, I want to thank Metro President Lynn Peterson. She came out and visited our fine community along with her chief of staff, and we were able to talk about what's going on at Metro, what's going on in Sherwood. We did a... We drove around town. Tim was good enough to join us, along with Joe and Julia. And yeah, it was very valuable. And it was not her first time to Sherwood. She claims she'd been here a lot, because a friend of hers lives out here. And we were going down Sunset, you know, at the peak of fall with all the leaves in the street. And she goes, this is what I always think of Sherwood. Exactly. So that was very nice. Congratulations to the kids, I guess, for Old Town Halloween and Sherwood Main Street and their efforts to put that on. And city staff, a lot of staff, put a lot of time and effort to help do that, close the streets. Thanks to the Public Works and PD to have a nice, safe place for a bunch of kids to get some candy, to frequent the Old Town businesses. So that was awesome. And the weather held out. It still holds out. I mean, what is this drought? It's crazy. Yesterday, I want to thank Chris Strickler, the new head, proposed head of ODOT. He still has to be confirmed by the legislature, but he met with us in his... In the Region One offices downtown Portland. Council President Rosner joined us, Joe and Julia, to talk about our issues and concerns, things we want to do and see. And he's barely been on the job less than a month. So great to get up front. And I called up League of Oregon City's CEO, my colleague, and I said, hey, guess what we're doing today? And he goes, wait, I haven't even had a... I have not even had a meeting with Chris yet. So he was impressed. So that was great. And I thanks Joe for helping set that up. Tomorrow, Craig Dirksen, our metro representative, is going to stop by. And again, we'll be able to visit with him, give him a tour, address our concerns as we look to the coming year. Some other stuff's going on. Put one point out, I'll be out of town, just going to spend a day in DC. League of Oregon City's asking me to go back there to help advocate for Oregon on some topics. So I thought I would be able to fit that in. Joe?
So just some news. Election results just came out, and you may have seen this. So all three charter revisions look like they're passing with big numbers.
Awesome.
I don't know how much, in terms of votes are in and things, but early results look good. So...
First swath usually is the driver, and if it's a big margin. So goes without saying, thanks to the community for voting. And if that is the result, we appreciate their support on the efforts of the Charter Review Committee to advance those topics. So... And what's the word on the other thing we've heard on in town is?
The parks?
Would that be the metro?
Metro, and I think that is passing as well.
Now, is that just the county, just Washington County, or is that all over?
It may just be Washington County, because I went to the Washington County page.
Okay, so yeah, they just have the Washington County. So we'll all see it on the news tonight or in the morning. So that's good news. Anything else I forgot? You all forgot?
One more thing. Just a reminder, we have our Veterans Day celebration coming up. Joe, what's the date on that again?
Monday.
Monday, that's correct.
Yes. And I want to thank Council President Tim Rosner, because I'll be out of town making this trip to DC for that. And Tim is going to emcee it.
Emcee the event.
So I appreciate that. It will be a great, a great event. And we are going to adjourn to an executive session. Thank you, everyone.